So we were going this weekend.
I thought he was in the smoke.
I'm in tree.
Me too.
Bella, any issues with Russell or Lillian?
Yeah, Russell, Lily.
Oh, they are. Okay. And the clock on the wall is. When did that happen? Oh, it just stopped? Oh. So it's perpetual. Wanted everyone to notice that the clock on the wall at the back of council, been there for a hundred years, is now permanently set at 5:30, the start of a council meeting. I'm told it's not going to move. Of course, it's not 5:30. It's only 5 o'clock. When do when that happen? At least it means, Lisa means we'll start on time when we have council meetings. Here come, uh. Yeah, okay. All right, Congressman Stahl and Ms. Fleming is on the way. Okay, but this workshop agenda, welcome everyone. Have a little something, a little surprise up front. We have a special guest here tonight, Joe Eddy from Boston, and he's, his group is the developers of the incredible Affordable Housing Project at the location of the summit in downtown Greenville. And he was in town today because it was kind of a kickoff of celebration of that project made possible with, by the Bailey Bill in South Carolina, which is a, it's been around for 30 years. It had that provision which allows your taxes to, the praise value to remain the same while you either, either restore an historic building or provide affordable housing. In 30 years of that program's existence, it's never been used for affordable housing before until now. The city of Greenville becomes the first city to use this for affordable housing and of course is a significant affordable housing project located in the heart of downtown Greenville. So Joe, if you want to come forward and you have a little gift for city council members. We had an event today and some were there and some were not. And Joe's got to catch, he's got to catch a plane, so I'll let him.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for putting this in the front. My name is Joe Eddy. As you mentioned, I'm president of JE Properties. The reason I'm here is we, we had a little presentation at Greenville Summit this, this afternoon. We, we, this originally happened in 2018. We finished the project right in the beginning of 2020. And we wanted to have a big ribbon cutting, make a big presentation, and then we had a pandemic. So, and at a senior property, right? So we couldn't do that. So we, we had something today and you'll, you'll see on your desk these, these nice boxes. Well, I'll say just a couple minutes about affordable housing. So.
Well, go ahead. Somebody open one up because I want them to see this amazing gift. This is a one of a kind.
Replica of Greenville Summit. It's a replica, yeah.
They are beautiful.
I don't want to get fingerprints.
Yeah.
Look at that. Oh, wow. Something.
So it has, yeah, very detailed. It even says Greenville Summit on the awnings and stuff. So we, one of my colleagues found it, yes.
One hundred and four, our poor housing in the heart of downtown Greenville. So it's a, and you're so appreciative what you've done. What a great job they did.
Yeah, I welcome all of you guys to come. Our, our property manager is there all the time. So just, you know, stick, stick your head in it. It does. It looks like a Class A building. It's the way it should be for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Just quickly on, on affordable housing, I think why it's important is it's extraordinarily difficult to preserve affordable housing and, and, you know, it's one of the downsides of having a very nice city. Your city's become very, I haven't been here for a year and a half. It's, that's amazing what's happened in Camper Town. And, um, you know, it's just so much easier for a landlord to charge more to someone that makes a lot of money. And, and so preserving it, it takes some creativity. And, you know, we bought this with the idea of trying to come up with a creative way to, we put $2 million of our own money into it, and it was because basically you're able to use this Bailey Bill for the first time to keep taxes the same. And then we basically use that to, to invest in, in the property. So in 19, as you said, 1992, Jimmy Bailey basically worked to do it and, and we actually found Jimmy Bailey. And he was so excited. He actually wants me to come to go to Charleston out with him to, to do it, to show what you guys have done here in Greenville. So, I guess just the, the last thing I, just to recognize it, that you guys passed a 2000, it was in recognition of Mayor White and City Council passing ordinance 2018 dash 48 on June 25th, 2018. Handed out these replica models of Greenville Summit commemorating the state of Carolina's first Bailey Bill Affordable Housing redevelopment. So I want to thank you guys for.
We really do appreciate it. And one other.
Yeah, it was, I just want to tell you, having seen the old and then seeing the new, oh my God, the laundry room, the big screen TVs, all the places for the people to sit. They said to me, Ms. Fleming, isn't this thing pretty? I said, yes, it is gorgeous. But what you've done to the lobby, oh my God.
Yeah.
Yes. So you put them in for some kind of award. It is beautiful.
We should apply for that, yes.
The lobby rivals, uh, you know, the Hyatt Hotel or some other AC hotel or somebody else. It's, it's quite, quite amazing, but it's a great opportunity. I want to share this council. Joe's has to catch a plane. I wanted to come and give the gift to us, but I want to tell you something else that happened today. So we hit the ceremony. I go back to the office here at City Hall. And what came in the mail today? A letter from California from a gentleman who says he's 94 years old and his hobby is collecting old postcards. And he sends them to wherever they should go. And he sent me, it arrived today, postcard of the Greenville Summit, the Hotel Greenville Hotel.
Oh, mercy.
Um, and said, you know, perhaps you recognize this. I hope it's still, you know, still up and, uh, just wanted to send it to Greenville, South Carolina. It's rightful, rightful home and unbelievable. We can't make that up. Wow. Yeah.
There is. We all, I mentioned it, Joe, we, am I on? Um, we subsequently have used the Bailey Bill or partnering, using the Bailey Bill on the project at the end of Hampton. Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, the one at the end of Hampton Ave is using the Bailey Bill for that project. Which, you know, you greasing the wheels on that one and giving us some learning experience on it makes it nothing more than, you know, makes it easier. And so we appreciate that and I hope we can continue to use it however we can to bring more affordable housing. It's, it's one of the tools in our toolkits and you were the first one to use it.
Yeah, well, thank you guys for passing it. It was, it was a lot of technical work and I, thanks for sticking with us.
And we appreciate it. And we look forward to having another, another project with you in the future. Thanks for being here and Aaron, thank you for being here too tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alrighty, I think first up is the B-cycle agreement. I believe we switched things around a little bit. Is that right, Mr. Manager? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, just wanted to provide an opportunity for representatives from Bcycle and Reedy Rides to come and talk about the last year of operations and celebrate some of the success, success they've had, um, the last 12 months or so. So I'm going to introduce Oliver Davis with Bcycle. He's going to come up and give a short presentation.
Hey, Kalen, uh, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name's Oliver Davis. I am with Bcycle. We're a Trek subsidiary based in Waterloo, Wisconsin. We, uh, we've been running the Bcycle system here for the last year and a half. You guys have had Bcycle previously. It was run by a, a nonprofit. We've since taken it over, but we, uh, we've, we've really enjoyed being here. We have some really great partners in, in Tate and Jamie and Reedy Rides. We've used, kind of used this model of, we are the owner and contract holder of the system, but we find a local operator. It's been so successful here that we've, we're now using it in several other cities throughout the US. And so I also want to say thank you to Kalen. He's been a great, great partner of ours and huge advocate. So thank you. I can use this. Is that right? So just real quickly, wanted to show you what, uh, what kind of has transformed Bcycle in Greenville recently. I'm using the year 2017, the, the gray bars there. That was, uh, previous to e-bikes. And then, uh, that was the, the best ridership year for e-bikes just in general. And then 2021 are those, the blue bars. We, uh, we had our best year last year. E-bikes was a, a big boost to that. And we're actually, we're surpassing even those ridership month, month over month this year. Also provide some notes on, we, we track things like estimated carbon offset, estimated calories burned from using different empirical data. So the really interesting note there is that ridership, the average ridership duration in Greenville is 69 minutes. So it's a very big boost to what we see just elsewhere. It's people going on very long rides using it recreational in, here in Greenville. Wanted to just mention just station performance. The, if you've ever seen the, the station just outside of City Hall here, that's our number one station. You'll see there at the bottom that there's two stations that Bcycle, once we took it over, we never opened them back up. They were on county property. We're actually looking to convert those, uh, and we're going to combine them and put them at the Swamp Rabbit Cafe here in the next couple of weeks. Little bit about our riders. Feel free to, to look at these. The, the one that I wanted to point out was, and the one that I think that just Bcycle and Trek in general, we care about the most is if you took your first ride on, or a, a first e-bike ride on a Bcycle, it's, it's very important to us. We then collect some data. We have Trek stores around the United States that we, we collect survey data that says they took their first ride on a Bcycle bike, or first e-bike ride on a Bcycle, and then they go to a Trek store and end up buying a bike, uh, about 50% of the time. It's really, really interesting data. Real quick, just wanted to mention some of our expansion plans. The, the two locations that we're looking on city property are at the, the Commons and under the Main Street Bridge. So tho- those are just a couple of the locations that we're looking at right now. Some other proposed locations, just generally in the Unity Park area. Over, uh, just near, around great, uh, sorry, McBee Avenue. And then we are, in the next few weeks, we're going to open up a station at the Swamp Rabbit Cafe as well. We're also in talks with Furman University and some local businesses in Travelers Rest, just to continue the, the trail up north. Uh, whether you know it or not, we do also integrate with the Transit App in Greenville. If you've ever used the Transit App, you can use it for more than just e-bike ridership or, uh, station ridership. You can use it for other modes of transport, transportations. We also have a new dockings infrastructure that, if you've ever seen the station outside, it's big bulky bases, kiosk. We actually have new technology that we can deploy very, very quickly. Literally just a dock sits in the ground. It's battery powered. We don't need, uh, AC or solar power. So we'll be looking to do that in, in Greenville as well. And then lastly, I wanted to, uh, bring up Jamie and Tate from Reedy Rides, just to talk about, uh, kind of what the impact has been on their side of things. They, uh, like I said, they've been great partners with us and we could not operate here in Greenville without them. So you guys want to come up and say something?
Sure. Thank, thanks, Oliver. Um, it really has been fantastic here for Greenville as a, as a small business right downtown. It's very easy for us to constantly sort of look where that, that next dollar is and how do we keep people employed? And, uh, Bcycle, because it's year round, it's a contract that we, you know, whether it's cold or hot, we're always operating these bikes. And, uh, it's been really great for Reedy Rides. We're able to hire, uh, we have three people that are part of our staff that are involved heavily in Bcycle. And, um, i- if that contract weren't part of what we have here, it would, it would cost jobs for us. So, um, we love having them here and, uh, we love the technology and, um, see how, we all love seeing the bikes up and down the trail all the time, too.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have. If you open up for questions from you all?
We're very appreciative of what, uh, your company's presented to us over the years and to see these in improved riderships, no surprise to me. As the bikes get better and easier to operate, the more people want to use them. But, uh, really good, good, good contribution. And Reedy Rides is a great asset for Greenville-Sacagawea and was in the business before everyone else got into the business. When people weren't quite sure where this was headed, they jumped right in. So we appreciate their participation as well.
Knox, quick question before we transition. It may have been on the pie chart somewhere in there that I missed, but how many, how many bikes are deployed throughout the stations here in Greenville?
So we have eight stations, uh, and roughly 40 bikes at any given time. Sometimes we, we have a little more in, in the fleet. Sometimes we have fewer just because we're doing maintenance, but it's, it's right around 40.
I'll, I'll add, I just appreciate y'all getting all this data for us. Having used one for the first time last week in another town that's extremely hilly, I was grateful for that electric assist. I know we are not as hilly, but I'm telling you, I was glad to have it, especially going across that Golden Gate Bridge. Not that I'm saying where I was. Um, I hope as the, um, Lawrence Road, uh, extension of the Swamp Rabbit Trail opens, which we are firmly committed to being ready for at the end of this year, that y'all will consider additional stations there. You know, along there, we have some, some big, uh, you know, some excellent places to consider, like the downtown airport, like, um, Home Team Barbecue. All of those are great places and realize you got to grow as you're able to, but hope you can look for that.
No, I, I would say that we are looking to aggressively, aggressively expand in Greenville. It's a very, very, it's a well-run market and it, it works very, very well for us. We just, in general, we've kind of brought some additional business in, in Clemson and in Spartanburg to the Reedy Ride, Ride, uh, folks. So, but aside from that, Greenville is a, it, we're seeing ridership grow year over year. I mean, this, this points to it a li- a little bit, but it's a, uh, we, we want to know where people want to ride. The number one question that I, I do get from users is when are you going to expand to different areas? So we will do that.
Where, uh, it, it's very impressive that the ridership looks like it's about tripled. How much of that would you attribute to the electric bikes?
Almost all of it. It's, it's, I mean, if you've never ridden one, it is, it's very fun to ride. It, even when you're going up a very steep hill, it feels like you're riding on flat ground.
It makes you feel like you're better than you are. And that's a good thing.
I won't comment on that.
Yeah. No, it, it, we, we do see in most markets ridership triples in, when you go from regular, we call it, I call it acoustic bikes to e-bikes.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the presentation by Greenville Water System. David Breskin is here. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Like the mayor said, I'm David Breskin, the exec, Chief Executive Officer of Greenville Water, and I'd like to introduce my, uh, chiefs that are with me today. Chief Administration Officer Bob Schmidt, Chief Operations Officer Jeff Boss, and our Chief Financial Officer Phil Robey. So with that, we were formed under the state statute as the Commission of Public Works of the city of Greenville, and we do business as Greenville Water. So, uh, state statute for a city of the size of 50,000 or more, uh, has three elected commissioners and two ex officios. Out of, uh, over 55,000 utilities in the United States, there are 10 utilities with a triple, triple A rating. And I am proud to say that Greenville Water holds that distinction. And that's due to all the efforts of my predecessors and my staff and my commission today. So, uh, historic, one of the features that goes into that rating is to make, uh, is, uh, the rating of affordability and the calculations on that. Historically, for the last 30 years or so, um, the measure of affordability is taking the median household income and deriving a 4%, 2% to water and 2% to wastewater. And that's the, uh, terms used by the bonding agencies, EPA, and, uh, the government agencies for grants. There is a movement over the last four years to change that to a, a unaffordability measure. And what that does, it takes the lowest quartile income of a jurisdiction and it applies a four and a half percent ratio to that. And the guidelines are two and a half percent of the LQI is for water and 2% for wastewater. So let's talk about the, uh, meat, uh, the affordability rating for the last 30 years. And it's based on 6,000 gallons. So a percent of monthly income of our residents, based on this formula, uses 1.62% for the water and wastewater bills. 0.27% for water and 1.35 for the combined wastewater portion. And that's on 6,000 gallons of usage. The same formula using 6,000 gallons of usage, but looking at the LQI has the percent of monthly income at 5.54% with about 0.94% going to the water bill and 4.60% to the wastewater bill. But I have some good news. Don't fret yet. Our average monthly usage in Greenville City is 4,397 gallons. And that brings the percentages down, that the monthly income for the LQI is 4.67%. And the, uh, soar is moving a little bit more. And let's look at the median, which is 50% of the households above and 50% below use about 3,100 gallons a month. And that brings us into compliance with the new rating. The water, uh, utility is at 0.64% and the wastewater utility is at 3.32%. I point this out because we're moving to a era where we're looking at environmental justice. We're looking at affordability for all of us. You're very proud of the Summit Hotel and what you're bringing there. We have to be, uh, very considerate of the rates and how they're going. This chart also point, points out that Greenville Water hasn't increased the rates since 2016.
Is that a quick question? Is that, is that median just for residential or is it residential and commercial?
Residential.
Okay.
So a 6,000 gallon, uh, bill, uh, looks, uh, the way it looks at, uh, today financially, $78.89 is your monthly bill with $13.34 assigned to the water utility and roughly $65 to wastewater. This is just a chart showing the increase, increase in growth within our entire service area from 2011 to 2021. The city's grown from about 20,000 accounts to over 23,000 accounts. This slide and show depicts the growth over the last five years. And you can see it's really centered around the metro areas and the corridors, uh, the transportation corridors. So let's give it a second to play out. Okay, so last month, what we heard was, uh, the city's request for changing the annexation water covenant. And it was unanimous, unanimously approved by the commission. And what does that mean? So over the last five years, that has been the growth within the, the one mile radius. You could see the dash blue lines and the growth that has occurred, that has signed a covenant. And this next slide shows the development that has occurred within the one and a half mile radius between the one mile and one and a half mile radius. These developments did not sign a covenant because that was not in the rules and regulations when this occurred. Any questions or move on? Mayor? So let's talk about city, city partnering for a moment. These are some of the projects we worked with Public Works on. We have a water line, uh, replacement program where we actively replace the galvanized and cast iron pipe that needs it in conjunction with the city, uh, resurfacing program. We like to get in there bef- uh, right before the city's streets are resurfaced. Replace the water lines, patch them, and then, uh, participate with the city in the overall asphalt replacement cost for the full width repayment. We're working with, uh, Public Works now to develop that program. Okay, ARPA. ARPA came along in, uh, March of 2021. The feds, uh, gave, uh, the state of South Carolina about $2.3 billion. That was 16 months ago. Greenville Water worked, uh, very diligently and aggressively with the state legislature to make sure that funding was in place for, uh, utilities across the state. I am pleased to say that last month, the legislature passed a bill that the governor signed, appointing $800 million for water wastewater and stormwater programs for utilities and cities to apply for across the state. So why is that important to Greenville Water? We're going to be putting an application in. It's, uh, applications are going to be received in September. And we should come out with a final ruling in December for this, uh, 16th transmission project, which is from the Atkins Water Treatment Plant to Cedar Rock, and that will complete the resiliency for dual lines all the way from Lake Kiwi to the treatment plant into the city just, just by the ballpark. So.
Dave, is that the RIA money? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is now going by script. So they're going to have a webinar, uh, June 29th that shows how to fill out the applications if the city's interested in applying for, uh, wastewater funding. Important dates to know is all the funds, um, the legislature in this tranche put 1.7, uh, billion dollars into, into play. They have 2.4 billion dollars. It all, all needs to be obligated by December of 2024. And it needs to be completely spent by December of 2026. So we're behind the eight ball right now and we got to get going. So the other reason I sho- I showed that affordability slide or unaffordability slides was a bill was pa- passed by the feds, Bill Bipartisan Infrastructure Law that, uh, approved $50 billion in water and wastewater projects across the nation. And it's going to be amended, administered by the State Revolving Fund. And a lot of these grants that are going to be administered are going to have an EJ component to it. So, um, we are now working through trying to expand the definition of, uh, EJ in the, uh, EPA law to include, uh, utilities like Greenville Water that have both areas that are in the EJ category and areas that are well beyond that. And we want to apply the funding for projects in Nickel Town and, uh, maybe San Francis, St. Francis Downtown. So we want to get some funding to help our funding so it could go a longer way in replacing the galvanized lines, bringing them from two, two inch up to six inch and eight inch and replacing the service lines from the street all the way to their homes. So that's a program where we'll be back in front of you asking for letters of support as we apply the State Revolving Fund.
Can I ask, I'm betting you just said from the street all the way to their homes. So through their meter and then connecting from their meter to their faucet?
Yeah. No, to the outside of their home.
To what, with the, whatever's the galvanized part? To the outside of their home, the feeder?
Yeah, we're going to stop at the outside of the home. Since our meters are in the street, we're going to go beyond that and take it from the meters to their household. And then they could deal with their inside plumbing. It's in conjunction with the lead service line replacement program. We're trying to expand those definitions to galvanized lines and, and change the, uh, definition of EJ40 for our community. Okay, next slide is, um, we have community investments over the last decade or so. This upper left-hand picture is a iconic, uh, Green, uh, Peace Center water fountain and two beautiful young ladies that happen to be my twin daughters posing at prom about five years ago. And, uh, I'm where we go. Uh, we, uh, participated with the city on their ED program when they wanted to bring Proterra to the community. Very proud about that. We were at the forefront of moving our operations center at the mayor's, uh, uh, asking and bequest from Mayberry to Washington, which, um, which was the start for, uh, the vision of the Unity Project. We, we moved ourselves from that, uh, place and went to, uh, build our, our site on Washington Street. You see the beautiful, uh, One Acre Park that the communities of Hampton, Pitney and Southern Side are able to enjoy as well as utilize our community, uh, uh, meeting room. And we have, uh, last but not least, a, uh, a robust investment in the Roper Mountain, Roper Mountain Science Center where we, uh, uh, support STEM education both in. where we, uh, uh, support STEM education, both in the exhibits as well as having our, uh, personnel go there for live presentations. Now, uh, moving on to some services, we provide the city, we provide billing, collection and customer service for the city sewer and trash services. And we provide, of course, water service to over two hundred and twenty-two accounts within, within the city irrigation, zoo, parks and recreation. These are some of the, uh, economic development projects that we've done since, uh, that, uh, passing in twenty-ten, where we are trying to increase the density per mile of water infrastructure. Those are some of the projects that have been applied for. And then, last but not least, we love the community events, both in the city and the county and the other cities where we provide the water buffalo hand washing stations. We support the municipal drinking fountains throughout Greenville County at large and the cities, and we just love those events. So, any questions?
Any questions for Breskin? I always want to thank him for being a great partner in economic development with the city in so many different ways, uh, as he's indicated today. And, and also in the broader community in a way that the water system really had not been in the past, but it's really a, a great thing. And thank you for that. And you, you had the nice picture of the water park at the spray park at, at Unity Park, which is much beloved. Uh, we appreciate your participating in that, like everything, and I'm sure you're very proud of what's happened over there.
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Dave, I, I, my children wanted, wanted me to make sure I told you that the splash pad is the greatest thing that's ever happened to them in their entire short lives.
I am so happy about that. And we hope to be working with the city on providing shade covering, uh, in that area too, as we get looking into the next year season.
And it's, you know, brought great, brought great joy to people every day. We go down there. Down there about three hours ago was absolutely about a thousand people down there and they were.
Wow.
Joy is the only word I can use to express what happens at Unity Park on a Monday at three o'clock. I mean, my goodness. Just amazing.
When they should be here in the chamber rooms.
Rather be there than here, but, uh, anyway, we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. I understand, Mr. Manager, we're going to go on to the other one and go on to the regular city council meeting. Okay, alright, good. Um, if you look at the clock on the wall, it says it's five.